Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 25th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Campbell, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith. Next, we'll move on to the roll call of members. Madam Quirk, we call the roll, please.
Sure. Councilman Kincaid.
President.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat is absent. Councilman Fleming.
President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any changes to the proposed minutes?
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. So minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to old business. I don't have anything on my calendar for old business. Does anything from the council?
Nothing from me.
Okay. New business, then. Tanya, you had an announcement you have to make.
Sure. Each year, it's required that the Clerk Treasurers' Office give a list of all outstanding checks that are two years old or older, and we don't have any this year. So that is the end of my presentation.
All right.
Thank you.
We will.
Make a motion we accept for outstanding presentation.
It's not even a motion. It just has public notice.
There you go.
We also have some food and beverage requests tonight, so I'll turn that over to John to introduce those.
Okay. We had the recent Food and Beverage Committee meeting, and we have two presenters here this evening. Ann Patterson will step forward and talk about the Symphony at Sunset for this year, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ann Patterson, and I am here on behalf of the Symphony at Sunset Group to request the Lebanon City Council to consider a grant funding for our 30th Annual Symphony at Sunset Concert through the Food and Beverage Grant. This year's concert is scheduled for June 30th, and it will be at Abner Longley Park. And again, it will feature the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra, and it will play popular selections, a salute to military service veterans, and patriotic music with a fireworks finale. This is a wonderful local tradition that brings a Symphony on the Prairie-type concert to Lebanon at a fraction of the cost. It is unique in that it brings a cultural event that is unlike any other event that Lebanon currently has, and I believe it increases the quality of life in our community. The budgeted cost for this year's concert is approximately $37,000. We, our ticket sales and our homemade cheese ball fundraiser only cover about one-third of the cost of bringing the symphony to Lebanon. The remaining amount comes from the sponsorship of local businesses, organizations, and individuals who generously give to make this event possible. Our organization Symphony at Sunset Group is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, which is made up of a small working board of directors. We are all volunteers, and we do not have any paid staff. This means that every donation that we receive goes directly to supporting our projects, which include our annual concert, the Symphony at Sunset in the park, the purchase of tickets for all local 5th graders to attend the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra Discovery Concert each year, and also sponsoring a local scholarship for a graduating senior who intends to attend college and pursue a major involving music. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today on behalf of the Symphony at Sunset Group. Thank you for considering a contribution to our organization from the Food and Beverage Fund. We look forward to once again partnering with the city of Lebanon to bring the symphony to our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
I don't think we have a lot of questions. Ann met with our organization or the committee meeting last week. Some of the things that she brought up were all in my notes that she already covered, but this being the 30th year, the funds raised, I thought was unique that it pays for all Lebanon 5th graders to attend the Discovery Concert in Indianapolis. I thought that was very unique and very exciting for those kids to be able to do that year in and year out. The one thing, it costs $30,000 just to get the orchestra and its equipment and everything here. I thought that was such a big expense. The time and effort that these people put in is unbelievable. And, but after 30 years, the other thing was the $4,500 with fireworks, and so everything comes with a cost. And so everyone enjoys the concert. Last year, they had over 500-plus people attend the concert. They work in conjunction with the city and the Parks Department by getting out the tables and some other things out there to make this a worthwhile cause as it's always been. So with that, I would...
What's the request amount?
Well, we're actually going to make a motion, so I move that we give 1,500 towards the Symphony at Sunset from the Food and Beverage Fund.
Second that motion.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Look forward to your 30th year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Yes.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, and we had another request as well?
Yes, we do. We have, or I'm sorry, Diane Schultz will be here making a presentation for the Boone County Chamber Home and Business Expo.
Good evening. Thank you for the Food and Beverage Committee for meeting me last week and giving me the opportunity to speak with you all here tonight. So many of you know the longstanding event, the Home and Garden Show. And last year, as really following the mission of the Boone County Chamber and supporting our members and giving them the opportunity to showcase the products and services that they provide, no matter what business category they are in, we renamed the event to the Home and Business Expo. So that event this year is April 11th and 12th, Thursday and Friday night. It is the same evening as the longstanding Lebanon Kwanis Pancake Supper. And if anybody knows how long the Home and Garden Show has been in existence, I haven't been able to find clear records on that, but I know it is a very longstanding event.
My first year of having a booth there was 1984.
Okay.
So I don't know what was before that.
Yes, so we're excited this year for the opportunity for, you know, businesses throughout Boone County, but most certainly the majority of those are from Lebanon. And it is an opportunity for individuals to come from throughout the Boone County region and beyond and know what wonderful businesses we have here right in Lebanon to really meet their needs, whether it's residential needs, personal needs, or business needs. So this year, we are providing entertainment free of admission charge. We do not charge admission for individuals to come to this event. It very much is a community event, and on Friday night, April 12th, we will be having a family focus event where families can come, they can interact with the businesses, and the businesses have the opportunity to increase their client, potential client base, as well as families coming and enjoying things such as inflatables. We're bringing in silly safaris to do animal shows. We're bringing in professional princesses and superheroes. We're happy that the Lebanon Fire Department will bring in emergency personnel for touch a truck. And we will also have Boone County and including Lebanon food providers that will be able to sell their products and really showcase the food offerings they provide. As many of you know, that individuals in neighboring communities of Boone County are not aware of what businesses are available right in the neighboring communities. So that is really our focus of the chamber, is to let individuals know, you know, what, whether it's a food establishment or financial institution, how they can connect with those businesses to meet their needs and keep that business right here in Boone County. So I appreciate the consideration, what we, what the contribution would be to cover the cost of bringing the professional entertainment to that event, so we can continue this event without charging admission. Is there any questions?
Diane met with our group, I'm sorry?
What's the entertainment?
The entertainment is going to be inflatables.
Oh, okay.
For kids, and I have to be very careful. An animal show.
Yes.
Exotic animal show.
Many of you have heard of silly safaris. They do a lot of entertaining shows for children, and then we do have a professional company that it will, they are professional princesses that will do musical entertainment. We'll have a schedule of entertainment marketed, so there'll be meet and greets and a show with the princesses. Then there'll be meet and greets and shows with superheroes, as well as the animals.
Oh, my, superhero. This is the first presentation for this organization that come in front of the Food and Beverage. Diane met with the committee on Thursday, March 21st. It was formerly known as the Home and Garden Show. Some of the dates she talked about was the 11th, which would also go in hand-in-hand with the...
Kwanis Pancake Supper.
Kwanis Pancake Supper. Friday, you talked about local businesses and things like that will be providing food. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then Saturday, even though it's not associated with your organization, there will be a annual 4-H barbecue.
The 4-H is, but we are not having the Home and Business Expo on Saturday this year. It'll just be Thursday and Friday. And something I should mention, too, we are collaborating, we're working hard at the Chamber to collaborate with other organizations and provide, you know, greater benefits to our members, and we have a lot of nonprofit organizations that are members of the Chamber also. So we are coordinating with the Community Foundation of Boone County, and in conjunction with the Home and Business Expo on Thursday night in Centennial Hall, we have about 40 nonprofit organizations that will be there with exhibit booths showcasing what their nonprofit organizations do. It's an opportunity for people to get involved on a volunteer level, get involved being a board member, so organizations such as, you know, Kwanis and, you know, like I said, there are 40 organizations that have the opportunity, one, to connect with community members, but also other businesses, and let people know what, you know, services they can provide to residents of Boone County, but also secure volunteers and donors for their organizations to be successful.
Last year's attendance, it's very difficult to get an attendance, was approximately 1,300 or more people that attended last year. Of the booth space, majority of the booths that are taken up this year are from Lebanon businesses. Majority of the members of the Chamber are also members of the city of Lebanon. So most of this is geared, or a lot of it is geared toward the city of Lebanon. With that, I would see if someone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we give $1,000 towards this.
We have a motion to give a $1,000 grant from the Food and Beverage Fund to the Boone County Chamber of Commerce for their Home and Business Expo. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Grant is approved. Thank Diane.
Thank you for your, thank you for your support and generosity, and I hope to see you all there on the 11th and 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the beverage request. So next item up is the City of Lebanon, Boone County, Indiana Interlocal Agreement Planning Jurisdiction for Whitehead Property. This is actually Resolution 2019-02, and I'll have Ben Bontrager introduce this resolution to everyone.
Good evening, council members. As you may recall, first part of this year, we completed the annexation process for this Whitehead property. And if you also recall, because we're in the year before an election, or for...
Census.
Census, sorry. We're about a month before an election, but we're in the year before a census that we cannot complete the annexation process, and it can't be effective this year. So that annexation we completed is effective January 1, 2020. Challenge here is that we have a petitioner that's wanting to bring in residential development and go through the Lebanon planning process, and they can't technically do that until January 1, 2020. So what we've been working on here with the county is an agreement where they would essentially transfer the planning jurisdiction to the city of Lebanon in the meantime, so that we can complete that process. So we'll essentially handle all planning functions related to that property until the annexation's effective. So this is our step number one, to get the council to consider this resolution for the interlocal agreement, and then we'll be in front of the county commissioners next Monday morning for them to be able to consider the interlocal agreement and get that signed. And then from that point, then we'll be able to start our local planning processes for this project. Be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Ben from council?
Do we pass that resolution tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
But then, once we pass it, the county commissioners will also have a similar...
They'll also have to consider the interlocal agreement in order to execute it.
So it does not have to come back to here?
It would not have to come back here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Rob, anything we need to add from a legal standpoint?
No, just in the communication, as Mr. Bontrager indicated, so we've been communicating back and forth with the county and legal counsel, and so it's at least subject to the respective bodies' review and approval, ready to go. So we'd be seeking the motion adopting the resolution and the interlocal agreement, and then authorizing the mayor to execute as well on behalf of the city.
I think we actually have the full signature blocks on these.
We did, yeah.
Right?
It's somewhat duplicative, but it's kind of belt and suspenders, really, from that end.
Any public comment concerning this resolution? Okay, Rob, you want to have the resolution read?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Resolution 2019-02 is a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lebanon and the Boone County regarding certain planning jurisdiction. As Mr. Bontrager indicated, the city has annexed certain territory adjacent to its boundaries in accordance with Indiana code, but it will not become effective until January 1, 2020, and all that annexation area is described in Exhibit A. Currently, the county oversees planning and zoning jurisdiction in that annexation area, and the county and the city are desirous to enter it into an agreement related to the planning and zoning jurisdiction of the area. So therefore, this interlocal agreement that's attached to Exhibit B is hereby approved, and the council authorizes the mayor to enter into the agreement, and it shall be at full force and effect upon its adoption. Again, this will need to be approved by the county as well.
Now that resolution's been read, any further questions, comments?
No, sir.
Any additional public comment? Please. Long walk from over there, Cindy.
Good evening. Cindy Zimmerman, Vice War Lane. I just have one question with the, I understand this resolution, but is there any preliminary development plans on how many homes, that type of thing, for this property? Because again, I live right there. I am concerned about 250, a lot of traffic.
Ben, could you talk about some of the details of the plan?
We do have some preliminary conceptual plans in the office. Nothing's been quote-unquote officially filed because it's not in our jurisdiction, but we do have some preliminary information, so if you wanted to stop in the planning office, we can share that with you.
It's all preliminary.
It's all preliminary. It has not started any planning processes, so the Plan Commission and council have a look at this still, so, but we'd have some preliminary information.
Hey, Ben, what's a ballpark number of the houses?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It is a, it's an age-targeted product. It's single-family, but it's all no maintenance, so...
Isn't that about 22 acres?
Twenty, yeah, 23 or 24, something like that. So it's a small property. I don't recall off the top of my head what they're currently proposing in terms of density. It's similar to the development that was proposed to the south, but it is, the difference being that this is all a no-maintenance product that's being proposed here. But that'll all be hammered out with the Plan Commission and council in the coming months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, this time, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2019-02.
I make a motion that we approve, Resolution 2019-02.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2019-02 passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Next up is Ordinance 2019-03. This is an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lebanon, amending Section 92.022 of the Lebanon City Code. I'll turn it back over to Ben to introduce this.
Thank you. Planning department from time to time reviews our building permit fees. Primarily, my goal is to make sure that we're covering our costs associated with both reviewing that permit and then also providing inspection services, et cetera. So that's what we just did recently. That is the first part of this that I'll go through here in a second. The second part is, we've been working with the fire department. They also on non-residential, so commercial, industrial buildings, and then also multifamily buildings. They complete a round of permit reviews, just like the planning office does, and then they also complete their own series of inspections, sometimes as many as six, seven, eight inspections, depending on the size or complexity of the building, just like we do for, on the permit side as well. Up to this point, they haven't been compensated in any way for their time that goes into it, and so we talked to them about, and they can probably fill in some of the details, they reviewed both their time that goes into it and just also compared the fees that they were considering relating to some of the other jurisdictions in the area that also do fire inspection fees. So, in addition to looking at the planning department fees, there were a few of them that we wanted to make some adjustments to, and then we've also added some additional fees that will be collected at the time of, as the building permits pulled, to cover some of the fire departments' both review and inspection time. So kind of going through on our residential building permit fees, now this is not a list of all of our fees. These are just the ones we're proposing to change. On multifamily and two-family, our old fee was a flat fee of $250 plus 60 cents for each additional unit, plus the 10 cents per square foot. Our new fee, we just changed that flat rate per unit to 250 across the board. Our review time and our inspection time doesn't decrease for the second unit after the first one. There's the same amount of inspections you have to do on unit number two as you did in unit number one, so there's really no, it doesn't make sense for us to have a decreasing flat fee per unit when our amount of time that goes into those inspections is the same. So rather than being 250 for the first unit plus 60 each additional, it's just 250 per unit plus the 10 cents per square foot. On additions and remodels, this is where we did make a number of changes here. On the additions, the major change here is that both our review time, it includes both a building inspector review, but also a planning review, because on an addition, we have to make sure we're meeting all the setbacks, et cetera. So we went, the flat rate changed from 100 to 150, and then the major change here is we went from 5 cents per square foot to 10 cents per square foot. The reason being is the review that we have to complete in the inspection list that we have to complete for an addition is the same as a new structure, so there's no reason for our fee for an addition to be any different than it would be for a new structure. So we did 10 cents per square foot, which is the same we charge per square foot as a new structure. So you got the same footers, you got the same foundations, you got the same underslab inspections. There's no, there's no reduction in the number of inspections you do for addition that you wouldn't do for a new structure. So that's the change we propose there. Same on remodeling. Depending on how extensive the remodeling project is, it could mean that we're doing more or less inspections. So then we established a per-square-foot charge, attach that to the remodeling permit fee as well. So if you're just doing, you know, a couple-room remodel, you're not going to pay that much, but if you're tearing the house down to its studs and completely redoing it, then your fee will be more appropriate with the amount of time we have included. On the non-residential side, again, the additions and remodeling was where we made the most changes. Again, for the additions, really, it wasn't a significant change, but I did want to make sure we had enough time. Lauren, our planner, does complete a very thorough site, site plan review to make sure that they're meeting all the requirements that were placed on in the development plan review that goes through the Plan Commission, so she's double-checking, making sure everything is kosher there with what they're approved, and that is a fairly extensive review. So we just did bump up that flat rate from 200 to 300 to make sure we're covering her time to do her review as well. The remodel, this was the biggest change of any that we proposed here, and I'll give you an example. When XPO Logistics came in and did a remodel of a 1.2 million square foot building, our permit fee was $500. So our building inspector had did a significant review of a 1.2 million square foot remodel and then completed, I don't know how many dozens of inspections on the remodel, and our fee that we collected was $500. That's the same for somebody that may have been remodeling a 500-square-foot commercial space. So that was not at all associated with the amount of time that goes into those. So again, the major change here is just looking at a per-square-foot charge, so that when, if we're, if someone's remodeling 1.2 million square feet, we have a fee associated with that that's applicable, and if it's a small one, then they'll pay a fee that makes more sense. And again, here, this is, we've kept keeping, we give a little bit of an incentive for someone doing a project in the downtown, so the historic buildings receive a 50% reduction in fee, and that's an incentive we've been providing and want to continue to provide for the folks that are doing that. And then on the fire department's side, I'll kind of let them walk through, but here, primarily, it's, you know, a planned review and inspection fee for both new buildings and additions, and then some additional variance reviews, but I'll let them, I'll let them walk through those for you.
Hey, Ben?
Yes, sir.
So what's the per-foot charge for that large industrial building?
It's 8 cents per square foot.
How'd you get that number?
So on our new, mostly additions and new, we charge 10 cents per square foot. On a remodel, you don't have the, you know, the footers and underslabs, so the inspection list is a little bit shorter for those remodels, so that's why, rather than being 10 cents, we did 8 cents.
Can we answer any questions for you over the new fee schedule?
Yeah, so how does this compare to our neighbors?
Considerably less. So we looked at best practice, what other cities and towns are doing, a comparable size, and we felt like we wanted to be competitive, but yet fall below what they're doing. And that's what we've chosen to do with our 3 cents per square foot, maxing it out at 2,000. Some of the numbers that were used in towns and cities our size was 17 cents per square foot, 14 cents per square foot with no cap. While we don't want to second-guess their motives, we just felt like that was not the correct fit for the city of Lebanon, and so we came up with the fee schedule that you see.
Okay.
Is that covering our cost of?
It is. Deputy Chief Baird is our fire marshal, our chief inspector. He spends an exceptional amount of time with plan review, and as... He spends an exceptional amount of time with plan review, and as Ben noted with XPO, just the amount of times that we're out there, the plan review that goes into that, it's just, that's where he's spending his time, his day, is in plan review and field inspections. I think this is a step in the right direction. I think there's time in the future, maybe with some growth with this, but I think this is a very good stepping-off point for the City of Lebanon.
Ben, how many years should we review these fees? How often should we review them?
I kind of review them on a rolling basis, and really, what, you know, if we're adding any, my main goal is to make sure we're covering our time, so if I feel like we're not covering our time...
Sure, that's all I care about.
But I would say, for the planning office, probably every couple of years, we're taking a look at them. Most of the time, my guess would be, we probably wouldn't make any changes every two years, but we'd want to at least be reviewing to make sure we're covering our time associated with those.
Sure, okay. Chief, do you need idea why we've never had a fire inspection fee?
No. This is something that we've worked on for four years now. We've looked at this fee schedule. We felt like the time was right, and just the amount of time that Chief Baird spends in the field, in the office, performing these inspections and plan reviews, it just is increasing year by year, but I do not have a good reason why it has not been used in the past. And this is commonplace in the fire service to have this fee schedule in.
Where's the destination of these funds?
Our goal is to create a non-reverting account that these fees will be remanded to.
That was mine.
Are they going to be earmarked for a particular purpose?
Eventually, down the road, we would like to look at a shift-level inspector, someone, maybe a retired fire marshal, that would come in and possibly assist us with our daily inspection and plan review. That's in the future.
So I'm trying to remember how many, on your report today, you gave, how many inspections we did the last two weeks?
The last two weeks, we did 27 commercial inspections, and, I mean, it can jump up to as many as 40, and it just depends on what commercial business we're visiting at that time. You know, a small business is going to take a small amount of time. We go out to XPO, U.S. Cold Storage, you know, we're there for almost a day.
Other things come into play, like runs, and I went to school one day, so that's a couple days.
It affects, I mean, this, 24 is an average that we like to hit every two weeks. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower.
Okay. Any further questions for Chief or for Ben?
No, sir.
I have one for Ben. So Ben, how do we compare around the other cities for your fees?
I think we're still in the lower half for most of our fees. We compare very favorably with most Boone County, Hendricks County communities. The communities that are higher are where you might expect in Hamilton County and some of those other communities like that, but I think we're still probably in the lower half, maybe to right around kind of the median in terms of fees as it relates to those communities.
What about, like, Crawford Hill and Frankfurt? About same size?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't recall off the top of my head. Some of those are less. I know, for example, like, Plainfield was significantly less. I was kind of shocked actually by how low their fees were. There's no way they're covering their time associated with them, but we, in terms of some of those other communities our size, they might be slightly less, but we're in the ballpark with most of them. And I can provide you with a spreadsheet. I didn't have it with me tonight.
I love spreadsheets.
I can email that all to you. We've got them all broken down, how they cover inspections. Some of them charge inspection fees separately from their building permit fees, so we have that all broken down. We can share that.
Okay. And this is just on first reading tonight, so we do have another reading of this ordinance as well. And this time, we'll have the ordinance read, and then we'll open up for public comment as well.
Question, Rob. Does this have to be, since there's a fee, I know we do on an ordinance with a, like a speed limit or something like that, there has to be an advertisement and so forth. I know it's ordinance, so it's going to be, so these fees will have to be advertised before we pass them.
Yeah, it'll have to be published, and then there's a 90-day waiting period before it can be implemented.
Absoluta fact. Okay. And I might ask Tanya one question. I think the fire chief touched on a little bit, but all this goes into the general fund at this time until a revolving fund is set up, wants to be set, or requested by the fire department to put their share into a revolving...
Non-reverting.
I mean, non-reverting?
Non-reverting, I'm sorry.
We can do that. Haven't yet, but...
I understand that. Right now, they're all going into the general fund, correct?
Do you receive money now?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to the fire department, not the fire department.
Well, I was talking, all of it, all the fees, they all go into the general fund?
Ben can't say it.
Planning department fees go to the general fund.
Yeah, and so until the fire department sets up a non-reverting fund, theirs is going to the general fund, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
We can do that.
Sure.
We can set it up and go to a non-reverting, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Ordinance 2019-03, amending Section 92.022 of the Lebanon City Code. The Unified Development Ordinance, the city provides that the City of Lebanon zoning administrator is to prepare, review annually, and maintains a schedule of fees for all applications, permits, and other processes outlined in the UDO. He has recommended that the current fee schedule, as we just went through, that's outlined in Section 92.022 in the city code, and is, should be revised, is set forth in Exhibit A. The Lebanon Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at their regularly scheduled meeting on March 18, 2019. They considered these amendments, and they have forwarded a favorable recommendation by a vote of 6 to 0 to this council to adopt this revised fee schedule. This council has reviewed and considered these revisions and has determined that Section 92.022 of the Lebanon City Code should be revised as proposed. As, again, this would be revised as set forth in Exhibit A, and then pursuant to Indiana Code, this ordinance shall be published at least one time in accordance with Indiana Code, not later than 30 days after its adoption, and would not become effective until 90 days after such publication.
Thank you, Rob. Now, the ordinance has been read on first reading. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning this issue? Okay. Ordinance 2019-03 has been read on first reading. We will take that up at our next meeting on April 8. That concludes what I have for new business on my agenda. Anything from council?
Yes, Mayor, I'm just going to touch on something in a minute that's kind of brought to my attention today. I didn't really pay much attention until I started looking at claims, and I was looking at the claims, and first of all, I make a motion, we pay the claim that's been presented this evening. Okay, I'll make that motion. But some of the members have a concern about the Casino Riverboat Community Development Fund, and some of the expenditures have been promoted out of there, so I'll let any of them speak and talk about what their concerns might be.
I'd like to make a motion that we, as date forward, that we, anything that comes from that Community Development Fund needs to come to the council for approval.
We, so when we budgeted that with your budget cycle, right, we heard from Umba and DLGF that we needed to budget our community development fund, our riverboat fund, so we budgeted that as a community development line item.
Yeah, I think what we're asking is that from this point forward, anything that wants to come out of that fund be brought to us for approval to be spent out of that fund, out of the Community Development Fund. Right now, we just think, we think it's just being spent randomly, and we think we ought to be able to look and make sure we understand what that money's being used for.
So it's...
In other words, we just had a line item, and there was no detail in that fund of how it was to be spent for what different items, and I think what we're looking at is just, let's get a little more oversight from the council of how that fund is to be used.
I think that would be a decision at budget time to change the rules and the guidelines, you know, instead of doing it midstream, you should wait till budget time, which is three, four months from now, and then kind of talk about it then.
Well, I just, you know, I think it's kind of a concern, and I'll leave it up to council. What you guys would like to do is, it's, there's just some, the way it's being used, it looks like it's...
Well, I would say that we had a backlog of community development projects that wanted to be moved forward, that once we had an approved community development fund, the community development department was able to move forward on those projects, so...
Yeah, but I...
So who's the community development?
Joe Page, he's Communications Community Development Director.
Well, and if he's using this for, like, it kind of appears like to me he's using some of this as promotions, and he had $5,000 in his line item in his department for promotions. Seems like to me all that money should have been used up for promotion items before we went here to use this Casino Riverboat Community Development Fund. I mean, there's items in here that are promotions. I think those really should have came out of promotions and not out of community development.
Have you talked to Joe?
Some things here, I can see community development, okay, but there's some items here that should have come in the other direction.
Have you talked to Joe about it?
No, I have not. I just now seen this this evening.
He's not here.
So I didn't know how much was even spent out of the fund.
You'd have a conversation with Joe, just to get the backstory on everything and see what...
Yeah, and maybe having a conversation with Joe and the council, as we have in one of our work sessions, to explain what he sees in community development.
Well, I think if we need to break that out into, you know, more specific line items, I'm sure we can have that discussion. I mean, that was, well, that was a discussion we had in budget cycle last year, and I tried to explain to you guys that we had to budget this as, you know, when it was put in there as community development, that wasn't really very specific. So, I mean, it's a community development initiative.
If it's a question, I think what we're looking at is, it appears it's one person making that judgment, what is community development and what is not.
Yeah, our Community Development Director.
You need to have that conversation with Joe, the page, prior to wanting to change the guidelines, you know, right now. I mean, you need to have a conversation...
I don't know that we're changing it all that much. We're just trying to get a little oversight on it.
Well, you need to have a conversation with Joe before you bring it up here.
That's all we're saying.
I think I agree that all we're asking is just a little insight on what's going on. I don't think we're asking to re-change anything. We're the fiscal body of the community, of the city, and if he wants to bring it up, we're not saying anything against it, but a couple of things that were on there, one I didn't understand, was a laptop. Why did we purchase a laptop out of that particular fund? I don't know. That'd be a good question to ask.
And I'm just...
And the thing would be, if that was something he wanted to buy or purchase, and he came in front of this body and said, "I want to spend $1,100 on a laptop out of this fund."
The mayor had a good explanation for that at the Board of Works of why that money was taken out of there for community development, and that was for, because he upgraded the computer he got to the new laptop, so that way he could do his, do the...
The podcast and then also the video editing that he does as well, too. So his, and his budget, or he does not have any IT budget as part of his...
But if you see the line item on that piece of paper, it's open for interpretation.
I mean, the line is not being overspent, correct?
No, no, it's not overspent.
Okay, so it's still within his budget?
No, no.
And...
You know, it just, you know, either we get a little insight of, Joe, please come to us and ask for it, you know, I doubt if we'd ever probably turn anything down, but just come to us, little ask for it, I guess. Maybe we, maybe they, maybe the board would like to have that control a little bit answered, so we know a little bit. If not, we need to make that directive at budget time next year.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. You know, we need to know stuff, but we don't need to micromanage whether they need to buy a laptop. We gave them the power and money at budget time to make that decisions. So if you have a question, I think we just need to call the person before we get it out here and talk about it out here, so that's all I'm saying. I mean, we'll find, we'll know, we'll find out, but if you've got a question, call Joe. I heard you.
I mean, it's a budget item, so, I mean, anyone can pull it and ask, hey, what is this item that's being paid out of the claims? So, you know, any of us has questions, but I think we budgeted this at budget time. It was there. If we want to revamp that, we can look at it during budget time this next year as far as maybe defining what exactly can come out of that fund, but I think we set it as a community development fund. It's being spent from the community development, so I feel pretty good about it right now. I'm not worried about the way that money's being spent. I know I can call the mayor's office or Joe and say, "Hey, what is this?", and I'll make an explanation for it. So I think anyone else can do the same thing.
Okay.
One, two cents.
Any further comments on that issue?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other new business?
Anyone else have any comments?
Well, as I'm listening to this, I can see both sides. I think that the position that we as a council gets in is if somebody asks us questions, we don't have enough information, they can't go to the person, so I think maybe having that discussion with Joe and kind of coming in and having a kind of like an understanding of communication projects that are out there, that might be helpful to us all the way around, because I think there can be misunderstanding of things, and that can get out of hand. So if we have some better direction on that, I think would be good, as far as Joe coming in and kind of talking. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Well, Joe gives a report every week, or every two weeks to the Board of Works about what the Community Development Department is working on, so that's where he explains how he's spending that money.
Let's add our next council working session that we, I'll ask Joe to come and speak to us about his thoughts of community development, where he thinks it's going.
I'm sure he'd be happy to share that with you.
Yeah, okay. And then we'll, you know, and that next meeting will be, we just had one, be in May, so we'll have one in May, and we'll be right coming up to budget season, and we can talk about that in August when we start budget time.
Is there any other new business from council?
Is that okay with the council?
Fine, fine with me.
Not okay, but I'll withdraw my motion.
There's already a motion on the table.
Second, I know there's a motion to pay the claims, but I wanted to see if there's any other new business before we went to pay the claims, which is the next section, so...
Keith Woodruff.
Keith Woodruff, his motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, that's fine. I've got, I didn't write it down because we already had one on the table, so...
I'll second you.
Hold on, hold on. Before we move on to claims, I want to ask if there are any other new business for council?
No, we're good.
Now we can move on to claims?
Make a motion. I will make a motion again to pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All claims are approved. Any further announcements or discussion?
No, sir.
Mike, you don't have any?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, second.
We have a motion adjourned and a second.
Got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, we are adjourned. Our next council meeting will be April 8 at 7:15 PM. Thanks for watching.